Yeah. You ready to roll, Hill? Let's go ahead and crack it up. Okay, it's nine o'clock and it is time for our weekly business meeting. This is going to be a little bit more special than most of this. I will go ahead and ask everyone to stand in the... Glenn Bailey, you might open this affair.
Father, as this meeting begins, we bow our heads acknowledging thee and thy son, Jesus Christ. We are grateful for the beauty of the land in which we live, for the opportunities it gives us to grow, to learn, and to worship thee according to the dictates of our own conscience. Father, we invite thy spirit to be here with us today, ask for thy guidance, thy inspiration, and the decisions that will be made in the discussions we will engage in. We pray for the leaders of this nation, that they will use wisdom in their decisions, that they will seek thy guidance and thy counsel. We pray for the people of this country, that they will turn their hearts to thee, they will seek to do good. These things we ask of the people of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
If you all follow me and pledge allegiance, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good. Steve?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adopt the order of agenda as presented.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Glenn, did you want to speak right now in public comment?
If that would be preferable, otherwise I'd wait till I am...
Why don't I have you speak right now?
Okay.
And then if you don't mind, also, former Commissioner Glenn Bailey and our respected member of the Panhandle Health Board have the public comments you want to make.
Mr. Chairman, distinguished members of the board. My name is Glenn Bailey. Former county commissioner and currently representing the Board of County Commissioners with the Panhandle Health District as their vice chairman and their trustee. So I do have some experience in the issues that will be discussed today. I can appreciate the concern that the board has for the recent mandate by the Panhandle Health District Board of Directors mandating that face covering will be mandatory for all five counties in District One. Myself and Dr. Alan Banks, who we both represent the Bonner County Board of Health, we argued against that decision. Our logic is that if face coverings are effective, which is questionable, and if there is a valid pandemic that is a valid threat to all residents, then maybe there's some justification. But we do not see that this COVID is a threat to the general populace of Bonner County and the other four counties of District One. Yes, it is a valid threat to individuals 65 or older, and especially if they have comorbid issues, heart disease, lung disease, those kinds of things, then it is a real threat to them. They need to be taking proper precautions. And if I'm in their presence, I'm gladly where face covering, even though I see that it has limited value in stopping the spread of this virus. Fortunately, our medical folks have been able to develop treatments to treat the COVID, and they've been very successful in reducing the death rate. I do not see a corresponding increase in the number of deaths with the number of COVID cases that have been identified. I just don't see it. For that reason, myself and Dr. Alan Banks argued against this mandate. Now, my question is, you are considering today a resolution to cut off the funding to Panhandle Health District. In my opinion, that would be what in the Air Force we used to call carpet bombing, when we could have taken a precision strike with a smart bomb. We have two individuals on the Panhandle Health District Board who have been the driving force behind the mask mandate, both in Cootenee County and now throughout the five northern counties. They represent the county commissioners for Cootenee County. I think the county commissioners there could be influenced to modify their representation of the Panhandle Health District. I see that the Panhandle Health District does perform needed services in the environmental sense, keeping our septic systems in proper condition, properly issued, maintaining our daycare centers, our elderly folks and those who are on limited incomes. They provide healthcare services for them, so they do have a value. Yet I think that totally terminating the funding to the Panhandle Health District would be overkill. I think that you'd be better served by doing a percentage of which you're currently doing now, if that's the direction you decide you'd like to go. But that is my counsel, having been in your position and currently serving at the Health District. I understand your frustration. I am frustrated as well. But I think we need to have a measured response. And those are my comments. If you have any questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them otherwise. Thank you.
At this point, you may ask, maybe call in. Alan, do you have anything you want to say, or do you think Glenn said something else?
I could add a little bit. That would be okay?
If you can, just quickly. Please.
Yeah, I'm Dr. Alan Banks. My doctorate's in chemistry, but I spent 45 years doing medical research, and I think I'm pretty well qualified to discuss the issues here. I've worked in cancer research. I have spliced genes and created pharmaceuticals based on genetic engineering technology. That's my background. I understand this whole issue probably better than anyone else in the five northern counties of Idaho. Maybe better than anyone else in Idaho. My point is that I have a pretty clear understanding of what the issues are scientifically. Further, I think I have a better understanding than the general practitioner who is on the board from Cootenee County or the nurse who's on the board from Cootenee County. If you look at the statistics of COVID, the death rates, it's about less than the flu, less than the seasonal flu. We didn't have drastic measures for the seasonal flu, and I don't see why we need drastic measures for something which is less dangerous. The numbers is passionately without hype in the media. That's important to understand. It's less dangerous than the flu. We have any number of medical authorities who have said the same thing, and they're being ignored by the media, but we should pay attention. As for masks, as for masks, the CDC published in May in their own journal, Emerging Infectious Diseases, that masks don't work. They looked at 14 retrospective randomized clinical trials going back to 1946, and in every one of those studies, there was no benefit to wearing the mask by the general public. So the science doesn't support it. Then most recently, on the 11th of November, the New England Journal of Medicine published a new article, Do Masks Work?, in a completely very tightly controlled clinical trial with 3,000 Marine Corps recruits. That's a big sample, 3,000 people, very tightly controlled. You can't get away from a Marine Corps drill instructor. They are rigorous in their adherence to the rules. And they found absolutely no benefit. In fact, there was a... Statistically, there was no benefit. In fact, those who weren't wearing masks had slightly lower infection rate than those who were wearing masks. Point is, they don't work. So the science doesn't support it. I've told the Panhandle Health District Board about this over and over and over again, and they don't want to listen. They have this near-religious belief that masks somehow have power to defeat the disease, which is less dangerous than the flu. So what do I think you should do as commissioners? I agree that the Health District has gone beyond its mandate. I think they're way more enthusiastic than they need to be. They do some things that are good. Glenn mentioned the septic systems, food inspections. They've hired 25 new people to trace COVID. Why didn't they hire 25 new people to trace influenza, which is far more dangerous? I have no idea, but we as a board are not informed. They just did it. They got a federal grant, and they went out and hired 25 new people to trace us. I mean, they're tracing COVID, they're tracing us. I think their wings need to be clipped. I think Glenn is right that as commissioners, we need to communicate with the other boards of commissioners that there's a way to do that and let them know that this is a concern and that we need to work at concert to make sure that this Health District, which is supposed to be safeguarding the health of the five northern counties, is actually doing that rather than imposing medical tyranny on us as citizens for something, again, which is less dangerous than the flu. So that's my take on it, and I'm happy to say anything later if you wish.
Okay, you may call in. Thank you. Okay, moving along. Let's go to agenda.
Okay, Mr. Chairman. Based on the information before us, I need to approve the consent to the agenda as presented.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Clerk, I'm going to do it.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning, everybody. Before you, I have this year 21 claims batch number five, the amount of 812,000, $915.61. Demand batch number five, about 30,000, $455.49, totaling 843,371.10 for your approval.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
All right, I move to approve payment of the FY21 claims and demands in batch number five, totaling 843,371.10.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion is approved.
Thank you, Mike. Thank you. Next, I have this year 21 EMS claims, number five, with about $21,231.71. Demand batch number five for EMS totaling $38.78, totaling $21,269.49.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve payment of FY21 EMS claims in batch number five and demand in batch number five totaling $21,269.49.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Mike. All right, let's move on to EMS. Keith Lindsay.
Jeff Lindsay, for the Record Director of EMS. ECMS requesting finally, is requesting approval of the Fault Point Contract subject to Bonner 911 via Marcus Robins Technical Requirements. It will increase the number of CPR and AED-trained citizens in Bonner County as well as place more AEDs in key locations.
All right, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I motion to approve the Fault Point Contract subject to Bonner County 911 via Marcus Robins Technical Requirement.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Yeah, appreciate Marcus.
Let's do a lot to save lives in Bonner County. Sorry, I had to throw that in for everybody to listen. Okay, hearing that, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, sir. Let's move on to Public Defender's Office. You have a candidate here, someone representing the Public Defender's Office.
Is she out there somewhere? I can read it.
Chairman, the Public Defender's Office is seeking approval to destroy records as outlined in the Public Defender's Records Retention Policy Resolution 16-22, passed by the DOC on February 16, 2016. Attached, please find our current list of files and/or documents that are due to be disposed of, shredded. Once the list has been approved for disposal, we will proceed with scheduling a date for shredding.
Now, Mr. Chairman, based on information before us, I may do approve Resolution 2020-84, authorizing the Public Defender's Office to destroy the documents as listed in a patch resolution and as outlined in the Public Defender's Records Retention Policy Resolution 1620.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Moving along to Recreation.
Nate Dennis for the Record. Attached is the annual operating plan for the Bonner County Groomers Association. This includes annual updates to the financial plan and operating plan, modifications of the USDA Forest Service updates they do make each year.
All right, based on the information before us, I move to approve Bonner County groomers association FY2021 Annual Operating Plan Agreement between Bonner County and the US Forest Service.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Nate. Human Resources, Cindy Baker. I'd be more polite now than running through me.
Good morning. Cindy Baker from Human Resources for the Record. Today, we have a revision to our Emergency Family Medical Lead. It's the Families First Corona Act policy, 2450, and we're adding additional language in that policy under 2486 around symptoms, exposures, and injury applications.
Thanks, Cindy.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, based on the information before us, I move to approve the amended changes to the Emergency Family Medical Lead Act 2450 to the Bonner County Personal Health Policy Manual effective December 1st, 2020.
Second that. Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Cindy.
Moving target, so we'll probably be changing it again, right?
Exactly. Probably next week.
Mr. Clatt from Roadbridge.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning, Steve.
I wanted to bring a few items, see you to make sure your agenda was not empty. The first is item we are considering the proposal to put in front of the voters next May for an override levy. We've had Welsh Comer have moved about their transportation plan, assisting us with some of the documents and engineering and study based on our transportation plan because they already had the information. This is a not-to-exceed $10,000 engineering agreement for them to assist us as we put this information together.
All right, under the provisions of IC67-2320, paragraph three, I move the board to approve the agreement for professional services with Welsh Comer Engineering not to exceed $10,000 for assistance in preparing accurate project costs to present voters and authorize the chairman to sign administratively.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And motion passes. Thanks, Steve.
All right, so this one now becomes a little more complex.
Of course it is.
So this is combining past history, past directors, and past operations, trying to have a clear path forward, and let's see how that did. So we own a 2013 John Deere motor grader that we own outright out of our fleet of 11 grader. We have been having mechanical issues with this, and really believe the maintenance cost superseded the value of that grader. And so with the commissioner's encouragement, came up with a trade-in plan, compared that between both CAT and John Deere. The two machines were different prices, the trade-ins were different, the buybacks were different. The net difference between the two machines that had a difference of nearly $35,000, the difference in the two packages was $1,200. But it came out in favor of CAT, and so our recommendation would be that we buy the CAT grader. It was a better value of the $200. And then it will be a lease purchase agreement that I'm going to present to you next for developing that.
And for those watching home, almost all our motor graders are leased. We have a buyback program. This one for Western State's CAT says the initial cost is $287,000 and changed. Guarantee buyback is $190,000. We found this the best way to continue to rotate our equipment and not start incurring huge maintenance costs. These things get, you know, they take a beating every year, especially with snow line, what have you. So I think it's great that we're finally moving to get that last motor grader on the actual lease buyback program.
And we just couldn't quite get it there quick enough.
Right.
And we just spent a bunch of money on it. And that's when I told Steve, we've got to get it in that rotation with the rest of them.
Yep.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I move to accept the bid of $287,774 and accept the sales agreement of Western State's Equipment Company to purchase the 2021 Caterpillar Model 140 grader and allow the chairman to sign the sales agreement and CAT guarantee for purchase administratively.
I'll take that.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thanks, Steve. Next item.
Okay, you should have seen that motion before I cleaned it up.
Normally, for the audience, normally Steve likes to write these motions that are the equivalent of War and Peace, so we appreciate it.
So what we have here is a lease agreement would be actually talked with, we had pursued Mountain West Bank and Columbia for leases in the past, and for this in a hurried agreement, Mountain West said that they really would have a little interest in this, so we just developed this lease agreement with Columbia. And this is just a proposal for the board to approve. But what we are looking at is leasing. Because we have a trade-in, the lease amount is less, and what we will actually have at the end of the lease is the buyback is greater than the lease debt. So we will have, for the next five years, we will still have cash for a trade-in value, a buy-down value when we purchase lease the next grader, five years. And the lease cost is about $10,000 a year. It does feel great.
All right, I move to approve Roadbridge Department soliciting a five-year lease agreement with Columbia Bank for the lease purchase of a CAT grader at 3.17% fixed annual rate for total cost of $20,645.05.
And I'll second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Okay, last but not least, we're going to discuss the last item, which is the mask mandate resolution that Commissioner Bradshaw put together. Let me take a little bit of executive privilege, Chairman's privilege here, and just say that we did get an opinion from the prosecutor's office, and we cannot defund Panhandle Health at this time to do what the state statute has to be done during the budget process. So all those folks that are concerned about us defunding Panhandle Health, that's not going to happen today. With that, I want to go ahead and talk about a few other things. We received a great number of emails, and thanks for everybody who emailed us. And by the way, I think since I've been an officer for the last four years, this is the most emails we've ever gotten on any single issue, both for and against. I mean, there was a, I stopped counting after a while, that there were probably pretty close to each other, maybe more people for defunding. And we appreciate it. I appreciate the professional nature of most of the emails. However, we always have those few that apparently haven't read the book, How to Win Friends and Influence People. They start out by insultiness and calling us all kinds of names, and they want us to agree with them. I don't know that that strategy's ever worked anywhere. If someone can figure out where it has, please let me know. You are the kind of folks that actually really hurt this country and this county as a whole, and I want to make sure I justifiably chastise you for doing that. What we want to hear when you guys are writing this is we want to hear your reasons why. We want to hear facts. We don't want to hear emotion. We want to know what are the actual facts? Why do you believe this? And to think that we cannot be swayed by your emails is just a logical fallacy. We take those into consideration. I read every single one of them. I actually responded to just about all of them. However, I got to apologize to the folks that have come in the last couple of days. I've been responding to emails on Wednesday, on Friday, on Saturday, on Sunday, yesterday, and even this morning. But it finally got so overwhelming that I just couldn't hit everybody. So if I did not respond to you, please do not be offended. At the end of the day, for me, there's a couple of things. I understand the fear. Since this started in March, we have been fed a constant stream of fear. In fact, if you look at the analysis, the U.S. has seen more fear-based news reports about COVID than any other country on the planet. Is COVID an issue? Do we believe it exists? Absolutely. I don't think there's any way to deny that. But when you start actually looking at the facts and detail and cut all the emotion out, you see that the issue is really for those folks that are in a compromised position. And I get that. And if you are compromised, please do all you can to protect yourself. It's your responsibility to protect your own health. It's not the rest of the public's responsibility, in my opinion, to protect your health. I might be compromised. I had some lung issues at one time, so you'll find that you don't see me out running around a lot. I don't wear a mask, but I make sure I socially distance. Panhandle Health says there's got to be 15 minutes of contact with someone who is tested positive within a 24-hour period, so I make sure that I don't have close conversations with anybody, except for my wife, and I can't get away from that. Amazingly enough, there's that wedding vow thing. But anyway. What I'm more concerned about is what this mandate has done. What I see is it's caused even more division in our community than I have ever seen. One of the great things about Bonner County to me was always, you know, you can see lawyers and hippies together having a beer, and everybody got along. Now what I see is this military division, some of it from the anti-mask group, but most of it from the pro-mask group. Listen, if you make a choice to wear a mask, possibly you shouldn't be chastised for it. You also should not be chastising others. We need to be able to come together on this. And as far as studies go, I can quote you. For every study, you quote me one way. I can quote you 10 studies the other way. The minutia behind this is just unfathomable. My biggest concern at this point is this, is that let's be logical. Turn off the news, talk to your neighbors, make sure you're sixty away at least. Um, and if you feel like wearing a mask, wear a mask. If you don't feel like wearing a mask, we're not going to tell you to wear a mask. Um, and even though we cannot, um, stop this mandate with defunding, um, we are looking at the constitutionality of this, because I do have a concern when we have a, an unelected board, um, making law basically, especially criminalizing this. To me, that was, I was the most shocked at that, because a thousand dollar fine and/or, and/or up to six months in jail, you gotta be kidding me. I mean, it's, we learned early on, if you're a student of history, that, that anyone who's willing to give up their freedom for security deserves neither. Should we be cautious? Absolutely. If you're in one of those high-risk categories, please take care of yourself. Please be responsible for you, but don't make everyone else responsible for your choices. One of the big issues I see, in fact, I'll tell you, but I won't tell the person's name, is someone who said that I'm not going to have family over Thanksgiving, but on Black Friday, they had their mask on and they were out shopping shoulder to shoulder with everyone else. Even with a mask on, and this, I think is one of the issues that I see, is that people get a false sense of security. I've got my mask on, and it's like this big shield. Your eyes are still exposed. Okay, wear a face shield. You need to wear a helmet that is sealed around your neck if you really want to try to avoid this. So, please continue to social distance. Please continue to wash your hands like you would every cold and flu season. I mean, this is not something new, as, as the previous esteemed board members for Panhandle Health who represent a state. We see this every year with the flu. We've seen no care centers in, in Samfaway two years ago that lost fifteen people from the flu, just like that. So, it happens, so we need to be smart, but we need to start coming together as a community. We cannot continue to see this division escalate, because it's going to get, it's going to get bad if we do. Um, we are hoping the numbers will turn around. We think they will. But just, you know, stop going at each other. Want to come at us, that's fine. I don't care. It's part of the job, but stop going at each other. You look more gracious to each other. Be nice. Be nice from a distance, but be nice. Um, stop harassing each other, and that's, I think at this point, that's all I've got to say. I mean, am I frustrated by this? Apparently, that's not all I had to say. Am I frustrated by this? Absolutely. Do I think it's wrong? Absolutely. But the key to me is, people, we gotta start getting along. For God's sake, it's Christmas season. You know, let's try to show some humility. Let's try to show some kindness. Let's stop trying to tell other people how to live. We're trying to force other people how they should live. And, uh, let's be the people that, you know, Bonner County always has been up until this issue. This will pass. We still need to be able to have relationship with each other after this. I don't want to see scars so deep that, that we lose that aspect of the county. That's all I got. Who wants to go next? Well said.
First of all, all the emails and everything, I, I appreciate them. Regardless of whether you were for or against, it's nice that you reach out to us, that we gather information. But I want this said, and on the record, that Steve Bradshaw is not trying to put Panhandle Health District out of business. They've got a myriad of things that they function in that are good services to a lot of people that need it. However, they are not a legislative body, and they took it upon theirself to dictate law, which they do not have authority to do. Any such authority would have had to come from the state of Idaho Department of Health and Welfare, which does not possess that authority, therefore could not pass that authority down to them. Uh, most of their funds come from the feds. Uh, for every dollar that Bonner County puts in, the state puts in eight dollars. We make up probably one percent of the five counties' dollars that are contributed to them. It was the only pushback that we have at this time. But there is another aspect to this, and I've tried to explain that in a lot of emails. We are overseers of the tax, taxpayers' dollars. We have a, uh, fiduciary duty to monitor where the tax dollars go. And it is a criminal offense for any of the three of us, or all three of us as a part, to fund anything that is considered an illegal activity. What Panhandle Health District did was an illegal activity. Not only violated the Constitution of the United States, but it violated the Constitution and the statutes of state Idaho. They stepped way over the line. They operated outside of their authoritative boundaries. They need to stick to what they were called to do and do the job they were called to do and lead lawmaking to the legislature. As a steward over the tax dollars of Bonner County, for me to say I'm going to support Panhandle Health District when they're operating in illegal activities is actually a criminal offense by state statute. I have a problem with that, because I'm allergic to prison. And I'm sure these other two probably have that same allergy. Uh, I support wearing a mask. If you want to wear a mask, mask it up and, and knock yourself out. But we all have the same access to information that Panhandle Health District does and that the doctors do. All we've got to do is look for it. I followed the research. I followed the science. Mask, absolutely, hands down, do not work. Uh, the one question I've had from the beginning, if I go and take a COVID test, does it specifically target COVID nineteen? Or does it just target the RNA of the COVID virus? Because that, that presents a major problem, because as Dr. Banks will tell you, there are over two thousand COVID viruses in existence on this planet. And they cover everything from the common cold to COVID nineteen. And for the RNA test that they do when they swab your nose, to get enough RNA to do a test, they cannot make a test positive with what they recover. So, they put it through what they call a cycle, and you can stop me when I get off the base there, Doc. Uh, they put it through a cycle which multiplies it, and they do that on an average of thirty-five times. Now, according to Dr. Fauci yesterday on a video clip that I watched where they interviewed him, at thirty-five cycles, the RNA is so diluted, there's no live virus left in it, and everyone potentially would test positive for COVID. Why? Because there's over two thousand COVID viruses floating around in the air in our planet. And you breathe them in and out every day. Most of them have no effect on humans. Some of them do. So, I have a problem with the whole pandemic thing, because the numbers don't add up. The death toll last year is the same as it was for this time period this year. And by some miraculous event, nobody has caught the flu in two thousand twenty. I find that suspicious at least. But that being said, uh, this is a legal issue that I've brought up. They, they've asked us to support them at something that they've done that's illegal. And I can't in good conscience take taxpayer dollars and fund somebody operating in illegal activities. Now, do they do good things? They do a ton of good stuff. But soon as you cross that line and do illegal stuff, what's that do to your good stuff you're doing? They're destroying their self by operating outside of their authority. And somebody needs to pull that into check. And if men that are in leadership don't step forward and do that, who's going to do it? Because I'm not willing to give up one of my civil liberties or rights for any reason, under any circumstance. And if you check the history of the world, anywhere that rights were given up or taken, they never got them back. And so, we need to decide, do we have a due process of law in this country, and are we going to follow it? Are we going to allow little organizations to dictate law and make up law at will? And not, well, it's for the better good. No, it's not. It's for an agenda much higher and deeper than what you see here today. So, that's all I've got to say at this moment.
Thanks, Mr. Bradshaw. Mr. Collins?
Um, yeah, I'm going to wade in here as much as I don't really want to, I guess, but, um,
I could say more if you like.
There's a lot of correspondence out there, and I apologize. I have, I only probably responded to a third after you read five hundred emails or try to read five hundred emails or six hundred, whatever it was. It gets a little daunting, and to try to respond to those, especially the way I type, it's pretty, uh, pretty impossible. I'd have to hire somebody to do it. Um, the thing that I want to touch on is what Glenn Bailey brought forward. Um, the defunding, to me, is, is an, an inaccurate bomb at best. We're going to drop a bomb out there and hope it hits something. Why, what he pointed out is exactly where I was headed. There's five members that are appointed basically by the commissioners. They're elected by all fifteen commissioners within the five counties. And then there's two at-large that are elected that same way. I think we've been remiss as county commissioners not to be sitting at that table. And I told Glenn this a few months ago. I said, I think that it should be a sitting commissioner. And I, and I still believe that. And now, um, I think that we need to revisit that. Glenn's done a wonderful job. Do I want to sit where Glenn does? Absolutely not.
You mean at here or on the board?
Yeah, on the, on the board of Panhandle Health. But I think I should, and the reason I should is because I'm an elected official. If you want to get to me, you can vote me out. And that's what I think a lot of, what I hear from a lot of people is, hey, these guys are unelected. We don't like what they're doing. And I'm not talking about obviously just Bonner County. I'm talking about the board structure as a whole. So, everybody would be a sitting county commissioner. And that was what it was designed for originally. Um, I know it's a time-consuming and deep endeavor, because, and, and I know these guys are volunteers, and I, I, I don't necessarily feel like, wow, that's something I really want to do. But I, I think that, um, in order to keep the commissioners up to speed and in order to be able to speak our piece, you know, when we had concerns about this moving forward, we didn't feel like we were heard. So, if we were sitting at the table, we'd be heard. And, um, I know that Glenn had called me and said, hey, where are you at on this? We had quite a discussion. So, it's not that, I just truly believe that it should be one of, one of the three of us. And, um, as far as the at-large, um, I think that those are picked on a different basis altogether, and I'm still fine with that. But, and, and, you know, I mean, I've got the bylaws. I've got everything in front of me. I've researched all this stuff. I, I've researched the amount of money that we put into it. I've researched the amount of money that the counties put in, which is, in twenty-one will be one point two million. Um, we put in two hundred and fifty-six thousand in twenty-one. That's what the budget is scheduled to do. And like Glenn pointed out, the good things that Panhandle Health does. And I, I've listened to, or I've read Dan's emails about, well, it's one percent. I don't know about the math on that, but it doesn't matter. That doesn't necessarily
That was actually a game.
Change my... So, their total budget for the year is, is twelve million, um, thirteen, or one hundred and thirty-five dollars left. And so, it's like, I don't know. It is what it is. The, the point of the matter is, is that no matter how much money it is, are we going to be affecting what we are trying to do? Are we making some sort of a point by, by removing this money? And are we going to get sued? I mean, are we, are we going to end up in some legal brouhaha, which is a very good possibility? And, um, are we going to spend a lot of money trying to defend that? I think there's other ways, and that's what we talked about with the board. Um, doesn't have to happen tomorrow, but, um, and then let the chips fall where they may. That doesn't mean that this would have turned out any different if we would have had five sitting commissioners on that board. I have no clue. We don't, but I think that at least that way, they can call me up and say, hey, dude, good luck with your next election. You know, that's what, that's what, that's the option they have, where with Glenn, they can call him up, but he won't listen, because he's not an elected official. But anyway, that's where I'm at, and I don't know where we go from here. What we're supposed to do now.
Right. We'll figure that out. Yes, as far as the numbers go, so Panhandle Health folks have said that five northern counties contribute about ten percent of the budget. If you extrapolate out the money we contribute, especially the remaining money since we already built in Portland, it, it's about one percent. Um, a lot of the programs that folks were emailing us about are funded by state or feds. They're not funded by the county. As far as setting systems go, that's funded by the users, so, and I think they're enjoying the boom with respect to revenue this year with all the construction in the five northern counties. But legally, we have, we don't have the authority to do it this time. We'd have to do it during budget periods, so this item becomes moot. Um, so there's really no point in reading or voting on it. Um, so from there, what I will do is we'll go ahead and, uh, we'll go ahead and recess, uh, this meeting and then re-adjourn back up in our normal quarters for our executive sessions.